Good evening. If we can all be quiet just for a moment here. Welcome to the 1,978th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. We're going to start tonight's meeting with a prayer led by Councilman Scott Barr. Please rise.
Lord God, the Creator of all things, the Author of all that is true, all that is good, it's a privilege to come to you in prayer. It's a privilege to be able to exercise these freedoms we have as citizens. It's a privilege to be able to serve. We pray as council members tonight that you would grant each one less wisdom to listen, to consider, to make wise decisions on behalf of our community. Pray blessing on all the first responders who serve our city and everywhere, and we pray that you would bless our city. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Again, welcome to tonight's regular meeting. This will be a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting on Monday, October 16th of 2023. Ms. Nash, please take the role.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present, we have all seven members of the council here tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of September 18th.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
Support.
We have an approving motion by Ms. McIntyre, a support by Mr. McCullough. Are there any additions or comments to the minutes from the council? I see none. Are there any additions or comments to the minutes from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the minutes.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for the audience to speak to us in regards to any items that are not on the agenda tonight. If there's anybody who would like to take advantage of that, please come to the podium at this time. Any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi.
I'm gonna, before you get started, I'll give you some details here. You have up to three minutes.
Okay.
Ms. McIntyre is the parliamentarian of the council. She's going to take the time for us. We ask that you address your comments to me, okay?
Okay.
Everybody will listen, but you gotta address them to me.
Okay.
Okay, you're all set. Please start with your name and address.
My name is Christine Hibbert, 1778 Park Lane Street in Livonia, 48152.
Go ahead.
Okay. My statement is about leaf blowers. I've copied an article that I can pass around. You guys can keep this, take a look at it regarding why leaf blower bans are on the rise. So my statement is about noise pollution. My dad built our house on Doris Street in Livonia in 1940. It was rural urban farm. They moved to Gladwin in 1977 because it was getting too busy and noisy. I purchased my first house on Newburgh in Livonia in 1979, also rural urban farm. We used to have pheasants. I understand progress is inevitable, but does it have to be so invasive? I have a nice ranch house in Denmark Estates with a lovely backyard that I can't even sit out and enjoy. While entertaining, I find myself shouting over trucks, the mowers, and especially the blowers. And now with so many power outages, the generators. Each one of my immediate neighbors has a generator, and they are loud. The safe decibel level has been reported as 70 decibels or less. 85 and up is more likely to cause damage over time. Lawn services use commercial gas blowers registering 80 to 90 decibels. With so many people using lawn service now, and it's the majority in my neighborhood for some reason, the noise seems like a constant. And in between the blowers and the edgers and the construction trucks and the deliveries and the trash removal and the airplane traffic above are branch chippers that came at 8:00 a.m. on Sunday, a couple of weeks ago. I realize the roads need fixing and lawns need cutting, but can we try to mitigate some of the noise pollution by adopting an ordinance to require all commercial lawn services to use electric blowers and trimmers and be subject to specific timeframes, no Sundays? And don't even get me started on environmental impact here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to this side. Good evening, sir. Please tell me your name and address.
Good evening. Paul Condon, 31115 Hillbrook Street in Livonia. And I'm here tonight because got our absentee ballot the other day and was a little bit confused. The instructions inside the ballot say that you, in two spots, say that you need to affix postage. 66 cents is referenced in one, and the other one just says it won't be delivered unless you put postage on it. But yet, the return envelope has postage prepaid. So I'm just kinda concerned about the possible confusion that might be coming with that type of a, you know, situation. And I don't know exactly the right place to address it, but I thought that a public forum like this might be the best in case there were other people that might be confused also. So I don't know whether I should put a stamp on it for sure or not put a stamp on it.
Well, when we're done with the audience communication, I ask the clerk to address your concern.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If there are other people who wish to address the council, if you don't mind lining up, that would be appropriate. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
James Kennedy, 33825 Richland, 48150.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy, you're on the agenda. You're item number three, so have a seat and we'll get with you as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Your name, please.
Karen Tran, 14241 Doris Street. I just came to bring invitations to those council people that I didn't see at the corn roast. It is for our first indoor kindness club game night. We're doing game night with a twist over at Silver Village, and we're inviting you to be part of our VIP group that our kids will recognize you, and we're going to have cards and pins for you so that you can see what these kids are like and how they work. And we're going to play a name bingo game, and so we thought it would just be a fun night for you to visit with them. And it is November 4th from 6:30 to 8:00, and Livonia Kiwanis is providing refreshments. And I do have to thank the groups that have stepped forward since the last time I was here. I've gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of random phone calls, mail, emails, supporting it. So I wanted to make sure that we invite the people that are there to help us through it and for our kids to meet the people that are important to our community. So I'm just going to leave these. You just pass them down there. President Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to address audience communication at this time? Seeing none, we will close audience communication. I will go directly to the city clerk for an election update.
Thank you. Yes, absentee ballots went out last week. Postage is paid now, and it's on the envelopes. If there was directions in there, I'm going to have to look tomorrow because they should not have been. It should be that is prepaid postage and it's paid for by the state. So we do not have, residents do not have to put postage on their return address, their return envelopes for the absentee ballots. And I'm sorry if there's any confusion. I'll look into that tomorrow, but those directions should not have gone out that way. They should have been changed. Those were the old directions. So I'll check that tomorrow. And I can get back to you on that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. As the council president here, I want to wish our economic development director, Mark Toramina, a happy birthday. He has the pleasure of celebrating his birthday tonight with us. Normally, I wouldn't let people clap, but Mark is definitely worth clapping for. On October 6th, Todd Zalinsik, right next to him, is celebrating a birthday. And they'll be celebrating together at Chuck E. Cheese on Friday. So I will note, in a more serious note, we do have new data on items 7, 9, and 10, and we have an upcoming public hearing on Wednesday, October 4th. That's two days from now for the city budget. With that being said, I'll go to my colleagues on the council. We'll start with Mr. Barr.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So in our finance meeting, finance committee meeting back in August, we had several members of the school board come and visit with us and begin a discussion in earnest about a agreement that's been in place for about 30 years through which Livonia Public Schools, Clarenceville Public Schools, and Schoolcraft College reimburse the city for essentially what's supposed to be their portion of tax collection services. And there's been various discussions as part of some of those other meetings around that and whether that agreement still makes sense in the form that it's in. And I would just like, Mr. President, to offer an emotion, as we discussed at our last committee meeting, to put into the finance committee officially the subject of, my computer's just set down, but I think I went off memory, the subject of that agreement with LPS, Clarenceville, and Schoolcraft. I'd like to put that schedule, that subject into the finance committee so that we can formally handle that in the coming months and figure out whether there's anything that needs to be changed with that.
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. We have support from Vice President Toy. Is there anybody else on the council wishing to address that item? I see none. Is anybody in the audience wishing to address the motion referring that item to the committee, to the finance committee? Excuse me. I see none. So Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That item is referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. With that, we'll go to Mr. Donavick. Did you have comments to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Sorry if it's a little warm in here. The air conditioning in this building is not working. On Saturday, October 7th, Saturday, October 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lee, Ne Hazel Park, which is right next door to City Hall, the Livonia Police Department is hosting the Faith and Blue event, which is an event for our police department. You get to know some of our officers. They'll be unveiling one of their cars, which was a pink police car. I think Councilman Morgan, he was a police officer in Livonia for 25 years, and I think his favorite color was the pink police car. So he drove that around. But anyways, that is, that's going to be supporting breast cancer awareness and supporting our police officers. So if your kid's around and family's around, if you want to stop by the city this week and get to check out the police cars and meet some police officers. Again, that's the Faith and Blue event, which will be this Saturday, October 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Larry Ne Hazel Park. Thank you, Mr. President.
No. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask with, I set the tone poorly at the beginning of the meeting, but we gotta refrain from clapping if it's all possible. Vice President Toy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would just like to compliment our Department of Public Works. My neighbors came to me and said how quickly they did some yard work in this lovely weather, and the chipper was out there today picking up all their debris and unwanted bushes, et cetera. And I just, kudos to them. They've been doing quite a job this year as it relates to picking up some of the yard waste. And we're very privileged because a lot of places do pay for some of that, and we in Livonia have that within our contract. So we're very proud of that. And I mean, you can throw out, don't throw out dead bodies out there, but seriously, in all seriousness, we could throw out most things and they'll pick them up. Those people work real hard. I know my colleague, Mr. Donavick, went on a ride with them and picked up trash and dead deer and all those wonderful things you don't want to touch, nor do I. So kudos to our DPW. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, we can't, you can talk to her afterwards, okay?
Yeah, be sure and let me know.
Thank you. Anybody on this side? Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today is October 2nd, and yesterday, October 1st, marked the beginning of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As I've done every year for the last four years, I've taken this opportunity to remind everyone, every woman, to talk to her doctor about getting an annual mammogram. On Halloween of 2019, I was diagnosed with very, very early-stage breast cancer thanks to a mammogram. And had I not had that mammogram, it wouldn't have been found as early as it was. I was very, very fortunate because it was early stage and it was easily treatable. The, I have to get this right, there have been a lot of different guidelines, and there's a lot of confusion. There have been different guidelines from the American Cancer Society, from the American Medical Association, but the United States Preventive Task Force recommends that all women get screened every other year starting at age 40. And it may be earlier or later for you, depending on your risk factors, it's important to talk to your doctor about it. And also, although it's very, very rare, men should also talk to doctors about their specific risk factors because every year, over 2,800 men in the United States are diagnosed with breast cancer. And the thing that I forgot to mention, in the United States, and this is a pretty grim statistic, one out of every eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And there's a great information on the CDC, and if you go to the CDC website and Google low, no-cost mammograms, you can find information on low and no-cost mammograms in our area. And I'll say it, don't delay, schedule your mammogram today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Mr. McCullough?
Just wanted to touch base. Wilson Barn, if you guys have been there, I know a lot. We have the farmer's market. I know that's seeming to wrap up pretty soon, but the pumpkin fest begins next week, and it looks to be a blast. If you haven't been there, I would highly recommend, reach out to them. They have information on their website. Wilson Barn, again, it looks like a blast. There's actually having a scarecrow competition, and it looks really awesome with the pumpkin and everything, all the activities for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. If there's nothing else from the council at this time, we will move on to our scheduled agenda. Tonight, that starts with reports that we have received from the mayor and other city officials. A is a communication from the Department of Finance dated September 8th of 2023 forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending July 31st of 2023, and also a communication from the Department of Finance dated September 8th of 2023 forwarding departmental purchase reports for the month ending August 31st of 2023. With that said, we will move to the consent agenda. Tonight, that is items 1 and 2. These items were previously studied on September 18th and found to require no additional study, and they will be voted on as a single item. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
We have a motion by Ms. McIntyre, support by Vice President Toy. Are there any comments from the audience on either item 1 or 2? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Items 1 and 2 pass. We will move on to unfinished business. That starts with item number 3. That's an appeal of business license denial by the Division of Police from the office of the city clerk. The application was submitted by James M. Kennedy Jr. to obtain a scavenger license. Counsel, to get this started, can I have a motion, please? This is a regular meeting. We need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Barr?
I'll offer denial for the sake of discussion.
Can I have?
I'll support.
Okay, so we have, at this point, a denial on the floor. Mr. Kennedy, come on up to the podium. Because this is a voting meeting, we need to start with a motion of some sort. I will ask Mr. Bernier, our city attorney, to give us some information in regards to this.
If I, if I could, to begin with, this was, this is an appeal, so denial is actually an approval. So if you want, if you want to affirm what the decision of the police department, it would be a approving resolution.
Got that, Mr. Barr?
I do have that. I just, I just wanted to make sure we are, we are all on the same page on that.
Do you have any information about this item that you'd like to present, or who will be presenting on behalf of the city?
Well, I guess I can. This was a decision by the police department, so when I saw it today on the agenda, I looked into it, and I don't pretend to know everything about it, but I know that there is a history. The petitioner had a larceny conviction recently, which is one of the reasons that the police department denied it. The larceny involved alleged scrapping behind a business at 12 o'clock at night of scrap metal that they were going to sell. The defendant pled guilty to that offense on our deferred sentencing program where, at the end of the probation, the case would be dismissed if he cooperated and did everything he was supposed to. I also looked, and there was a various complaints and an investigation and charges on our zoning ordinances dealing with the, or the, our ordinances dealing with the condition of the house, because apparently the scrapping is often done at his house in the backyard, and the neighbors were very upset. Our inspection department was out there many times trying to deal with the situation, didn't have a whole lot of luck. In fact, one time, if the allegations, from the allegations I'm reading, while he was doing scrapping, it caused a fire, which caused a car to on fire, and the neighbor's garage caught a fire partially. So I think those were the reasons that the police department denied the warrant, denied the application.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you've heard what we've heard here. Now's the date and time for you to make your appeal of this denial of the license.
Well, the, the charge that I, that I got, it was like, it was a misunderstanding. It was actually the guy I was scrapping with, and he got out to go use the restroom. He asked me to pull over. So I pulled over, and then he came back with that. I never got out of the vehicle or anything, but since I was driving, that's why I was, I was guilty as well. But I, I mean, I do it for a living. I, I try to do it the right way as far as I can, and I no longer have that partner. He's not with me anymore. And then the, the house, that's cleaned up. Just sometimes, like, the fire had nothing to do with scrapping. That was a Ryobi battery exploded inside of the vehicle and which caused the fire. That's...
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, first of all, thanks for being here tonight. I know this isn't, some of these things aren't pleasant.
I never knew.
Some of these things aren't pleasant topics to stand up there and listen to, and I'm sensitive to that, and I want to be sensitive to that in the discussion. Yet, we need to understand some things. Our police department has recommended that this be denied. You've appealed that, and so we need to ask some questions.
Right, absolutely.
So the, the larceny charge that was talked about earlier, is that the only charge that has been brought against you?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying that you're on, the judge has granted you a probationary period that if you meet all the obligations and that will be taken off?
Right. This was the only charge to plead guilty to that would actually fall off.
How long have you been doing this?
Two years.
Okay. Oh, in Livonia or all over?
I do all over.
Okay. I had a question for Paul, and I'm trying to remember what it was. Give me a second here.
There, while you're thinking, there is a correction zone, and I'm sure he's saying what he believes to be true. I have no doubt about that because most people don't realize that in our billing and inspection ordinances, others are actually misdemeanors to which he pled on also. So the other one that I talked about before with the condition of the house, those are also technically misdemeanors. I believe he probably doesn't understand, he may or may not understand the distinction, but that in fact was a misdemeanor also.
The condition of the house? Is that...
The condition of the backyard, the property where there was scrapping going on in, at the backyard, at his house.
So, sir, again, and again, I don't want to be insensitive, but thanks for just helping us out here with just answering some questions. So do you, do you run this whole operation out of your backyard currently?
No, no. I actually do it like out of my garage, but I, I also use my buddy's house in Detroit.
So is this a nightly?
Just whenever, whenever it works out, really. Like today, I've got a phone call. Could I pass out business cards as well? I got a phone call, I went to Farmington Hills, picked up, you know, from the liquor store, a bunch of stuff, and then brought, brought it back.
Okay. And just, just for the record, I, I don't have a problem necessarily with what you do. I actually, just as one homeowner, I, I actually think people that scrap responsibly actually provide a service to the community. I sometimes appreciate being able to put some things out, knowing somebody's going to get use out of it. So I don't, I don't have a problem in principle with what you're doing, just trying to get at the bottom of what we're dealing with here. Paul, just, so when I hear this, and I'm not in the courtroom every day, but what I'm hearing is there's a charge, judge has given him a way to have that charge dismissed if he meets all these requirements for a certain period of time, and what I'm hearing is that he's making an earnest effort to do that. Is there, is there a detail I'm missing here that...
No, it's, it's, that wasn't the decision that the law department made. That was from the police department.
Understood.
And I'm providing the information as to why they came up with what they did. The program that he's under to allow him not have a conviction actually isn't the courts, that's ours in the law department, okay? We made the decision to offer him the ability to keep it off of his record, the larceny, if he does, if he stays out of trouble and does what he's supposed to do and whatever sentence the judge hands down. So it's actually the law department's program in conjunction with the court that we offered to him, so he keeps it off of his, off of his record.
So can you help me understand if the law department put that into place presumably to give him an opportunity to prove that he's doing this the right way? I mean, was the police department not aware of that when they did this denial, or...
I can't tell you what they knew because they, they don't consult. I wasn't consulted with why they did or didn't do what they did. I was asked, because I knew it was coming up, to look into the background of, of the defendant and why it might have been denied. The officer who in fact denied it is off today, so I couldn't, I couldn't talk to him directly.
So if, if he meets the terms of this probationary period, then part of that, I assume, would be to get a license. I'm guessing he already has got a license.
That is one of the...
And in which case, we could monitor his activity and...
Yes, the condition of his probation from Judge Kavanaugh was either get a scrapping license or get a job, one or the other. It wasn't that he had to get a scr, because of course, the judge knows he can't order us to give a license to anybody. So the, so the option was either get a scrapping license or get a job. Those were the terms of the judge.
Okay, I'll withhold any more, see if there's any of my colleagues that have questions. If they don't, Mr. Chair, I'll ask for the floor again.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bernier, how long does this scrapper, this scavenger scrap collection permit last? Is it a year, or if we approve it, if we appeal the denial and grant him this, does it last for a year? Are there stipulations we can place on that permit to give him an opportunity if he, if he does everything right for the year, or is it forever granted?
Well, the license has timeframes when you can scrap and when and where you can scrap, so that's, that's in our ordinance, when you can. The license, I believe, I have to, the clerk is a one-year license, I believe.
One-year licenses.
So it is a one-year license, so if he, he'd have to come back a year from now from the date of approval?
Just like any other license with the city, they have to come back every year.
And Mr. Bernier, Mrs., the clerk, Susan Nash, do we have anything on ordinance that specifically states you can't? Because I don't want, I don't want people scrapping material on their backyards either. I don't want that, but I understand it's private property. My question is, is there anything in this collection permit or in our ordinance that specifically says people can't scrap or operate this sort of, sort of business out of their backyard?
Yes. You can't conduct a business in your back, at your house in general unless you have a you have a license for it. And that, that license would never, a scrapping license in your backyard hopefully would never be granted in the city of Livonia.
In the permit itself, I, I know other permits you file from a business perspective, you have to give like your business address and where you're conducting business. Does this permit, does it ask for a place of business or, or can you just put your residential address and that's okay?
I, I, I think it's just where your residence is because a lot of the scrappers and the gentleman could probably tell you better than I could, they take the metals, they collect the metals and they go to a facility to sell the metals because that's where the money is, as I understand it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, um, Mr. Bernier, I have a quick question, um, regarding the, um, this license. Um, just, I, I know we just discussed about his, uh, the court situation, but isn't there other things that are put into this, like they run the CCH and the fingerprints and all that stuff? So is there, is there a potential that that wasn't just the sole reason that this was, um, denied?
I looked, I pulled the files from the court today after I knew it was going to be on, on the issue. And I looked at it according to the write-ups from the police reports, he has a claim CCHs other than these two events. Maybe he has no criminal record.
Yep, all right, thank you.
For those of us who are in law enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else from the, Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, through the chair to Mr. Kennedy. So where, and maybe you said this and I missed it, so where are you performing the activities when you do the scrapping and then you have to separate? Sometimes, you know, you might pick up an item and it needs, their components need to be pulled off before it can be scrapped. Where are you doing that?
I'll either do it inside of my garage where nobody can see or over at my friend's house in Detroit.
Okay.
At like Seven Mile and Telegraph area.
Mr. Dolly, uh, Mr. Bernier, is that sort of activity, knowing what the many things people do in their garages, is that activity prohibited?
We've never, to my knowledge, ever prosecuted anyone for doing something in their garage that isn't violating, as we saw, the noise ordinances. Because if you're out there clinging away at night, that causes a lot of noise, but if you're doing it behind a closed garage, we've never, to my knowledge, ever went after anybody for something like that. It's, it's the issues that cause, uh, kind of concerns to the neighbors, the garbage in the yards, the things being laid out, the, those potentials that we've, we've had issues with.
Ms. Chair.
I don't, and, and the officer who had suggested the denial was off today, right? So we were not able, I, I've never, I don't think in eight years I've ever gone against any recommendation from our police department. Um, so I'd really like to hear that. That said, I really appreciate Mr. Kennedy coming forward to do this the right way. And I, I referenced this at the last, at our study meeting on this issue. There are a lot of people that do scrapping and I think maybe at one time you were one of those people who do it under the cover of darkness. And, um, you've, you've, uh, had a opportunity to right your ways, right, through, um, through the, uh, through the charges. Um, I, I don't know how my, I guess I'd like to hear what my colleagues feel. I'd, I'd really like to hear what the police officer had to say because I, I appreciate that you're here and you want to do this the right way and you're coming forward. We know who you are, you have to abide now by all the regulations that go along with the license. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have something?
Yeah, just quickly.
Vice President Toy, then Donavich, then Barr.
If I may, um, I, I do believe it's a city ordinance that we do not allow businesses within residential areas. Is that correct?
As a general rule, yes.
Okay. Um, and also, there's good reason for that. I mean, you know, I'd love to be able to do part of my business out of my garage, in my backyard, wherever. Um, but you can't do that because you've got other things that go on within different businesses, whether it be delivery trucks, people coming to pick up items, whatever. I empathize with Mr. Kennedy, but my colleague McIntyre is right. I think we need the police officer here and some kind of explanation to this before we jump to conclusions, whatever. We don't have the whole story. So, um, I would ask for this to go to committee of the whole, how's that?
Are you making a motion?
I am, I'm, I'm going to say.
I'll, I'll support.
Wait, we have, don't make a motion on the floor. I'm sorry.
I, I gotta think in my own mind for a second.
Yeah, as a substitute.
You're offering a substitute motion. Is there support for the substitute motion? Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor. Before we go any further, Mr. Barr, do you object to the substitution of the motion?
Doesn't matter, it's been seconded now, we just need to vote on the substitute.
Yeah.
Whether we want, I think we vote whether we want to substitute, right? Is that right?
Correct, I'm just giving you the first chance here to speak because it's to replace your motion.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I won't, I won't go into detail just because I want to respect the process here, other than to say I'm, I'm not going to support the substitute. I think I've, can I, can I speak as my reason? I guess my reasons probably relate to my motion, I need to be speaking to this motion right now. I, I'll just say I'm not going to support the substitute and I'll hold the comments if we get past this, we're going to go back to my motion.
Mr. Donavich, on the substitution of the motion?
Thank you. Uh, well, would it be appropriate, because I have a question to Mr. Bernier about the situation? It's not particularly pertaining to the substitute motion itself.
Right now, we're only talking about the substitution of the motion.
Because I have a question that will make my, make my decision. I, I guess my question was then, is there any, um, any outstanding ordinance violations? I know you referenced violations for, for the backyard and what have you from the ordinance department. Is there anything outstanding right now?
I haven't been by the house personally and when, I haven't talked to the ordinance officer, so I think it was Johnson was the ordinance officer. I haven't talked to him, so I don't know. I don't think we have any probation violation hearings coming up on the case, so, um, I don't know if it's been cleaned up. I know at one time it was, I can tell you that. I know one time it was cleaned up, but since that time I have no idea. But I haven't seen any subsequent violations, uh, at the courthouse, is the best I can tell you.
Ms. McIntyre?
I will not be supporting the substitute motion. Um, I believe we could have had a substitute motion, uh, point of information through you, Mr. Chair. Paul, we could have had a substitute motion to table, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and a tabling would just put it off until we could get the information from the police department. I, I, the committee of the whole requires the entire council to come back together. I think we have all the facts except for what the police officer had to say, so I'm, I will not be subs- supporting this particular substitute motion, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go through everybody once real quick here. Mr. McCullough?
I'll defer to Vice President Toy. I think I know what she's going to be doing here.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you. Um, the reason I'm trying to get it into committee of the whole, it seems like there might be some sensitive information. And this gentleman has stood up here and said, you know, withstood some, some things that have happened and I'm just trying to think of that sensitivity. So that's why I said committee of the whole, tabling is fine too, but that's, that's rationale I had at the time.
I don't want to, let me say this, because I don't want people to think that there is something looming out there.
No, no.
And we're looking to get them done. I, I ran his, in the Livonia, the court system, other than a few tickets that he's had, which probably half the crowd has had traffic tickets. Uh, he, the only matters we're talking about are the matters he has. And that's, so I, I think the decision was made based on that. But I don't think there's anything looming out there that's of a sensitive nature.
Okay, if I still have the floor, I'll withdraw it then, Mr. Chair, if that's okay with my supporter?
Yes.
As well?
Okay.
That, that gives me full explanation, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Mr. Barr?
Well, I have to say, there are four items on the agenda tonight that I'm expecting to take a lot of time and this was not one of them. So thanks for your patience. Um, so I, I, I understand and concur with a lot of the sentiment that's been expressed up here, although it just, it seems to me, first of all, when this came to our study meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, and you were not here, I, I just immediately offered a denial. We had a, we had a denial by the police department, you weren't here to talk about it, it was like, no sense in us talking about it, let's move on. Now we have a situation where the police aren't here. And, um, and, well, it's probably appropriate to show a little extra deference to the police. It's probably also fair to say, they probably should have been here to talk about this. I, I think it's fair to say that Judge Kavanaugh, who apparently handled this, would have been aware of everything the police department was aware of when he offered you the probationary period and probably asked all the very types of questions that we want to ask. So with that in mind, I mean, this is not what I had intended to do coming here tonight, but, um, I'm going to, now that I understand the way the resolution is written, I'm going to withdraw my denial and I'm going to offer an approval for, am I doing that right?
No, you want to keep it, if, if you wanted to get the license, it would, you'd keep it as a denying resolution.
The council is hereby determined, so I did offer denial, then?
Yes, you did.
So I'm good?
Good.
So you confused me.
I'm, I'm a lawyer.
Okay, so the end result is, I, I, and I think this is consistent with what Judge Kavanaugh was doing and as far as I can tell, you are trying to do everything according with that. The end result I'm looking for is for you to get the license that you're looking for. Um, you know, if there's problems, hope not, but if there's a problem in the future, that'll be handled. I think some of the other issues have been talked about related to your home, those are concerning, but they strike me as different issues than what we're talking about here. So I will leave my denial on the table and I'll be supporting that denial tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre?
A point of information, uh, through the chair to Mr. Bernier. Can licenses be revoked for failure to?
Yeah, we've, we've revoked license from various businesses, including scavengers before. Because there, we do have hours, we do have days, we do have different rules that they have to follow. And if they don't, we, we have revoked license.
And, well, I'm again reluctant to, um, go against a police recommendation. When Judge Kavanaugh made his recommendation, he would have seen all the information that was provided by the police, correct?
Judge Kavanaugh knew about the ordinance violations and he knew what this case was about at the time.
Okay, thank you.
There's, there was, there's the, there were no surprises then, there are no surprises now.
And for those reasons, I'll be supporting this, understanding that if, uh, things are violated or there's additional information that maybe wasn't clear to us that would affect the approval, we could revoke the license. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. Jolly. To my colleague's question, Mr. Bernier, does it make sense for us to add into the resolution that if the, the petitioner continues to scrap metal at his home and operate a business in the manner that he is, we could revoke that? Or by, by essence of the permit, it already accomplishes that?
I have a much better tool and it's called charging him with a crime if he violates. Uh, so, so that condition is honestly not necessary. Um, I've dealt with Mr. Kennedy and he knows what the rules are. And he knows what can happen if he doesn't follow the rules.
Yep. Okay, if there's nothing else from the council, we'll go to the audience. Does anybody in the audience want to speak on this item and Mr. Kennedy's application for a scavenger license? Going once, going twice? I see no comments. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on Mr. Barr's motion to deny, uh, the current standing of this matter, which would in, in, in part grant him the license. Go ahead.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Nay.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye, the matter passes. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you.
I think Ms. Nash's office will work with you to get you the appropriate license.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number four is an application for commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate from CJK Investments LLC on behalf of Ducati Detroit for the property of 19265 Victor Parkway in Livonia to facilitate the redevelopment of this property. Uh, this would be commercial rehabilitation district number five. A public hearing was held on September 13th of 2023. Can I have a motion on this?
Mr. President?
I'll offer approving.
We have an approving from Vice President Toy.
Support.
We have support from Mr. Donavich. Is there anything from the council in regards of, uh, comment on this matter? Mr. Donavich?
I, I think, uh, this would be an exciting project for the city, so the city's partnering with them and getting rid of a bladed building and, uh, looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else from the council, we'll go to the audience on number four. Is there anybody here speaking on item number four from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote approving this matter.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, the matter is approved and therefore creates commercial rehabilitation district number five. We will move on to item number five, that's a waiver petition from the planning commission for petition 2023050204 submitted by the ax parlor requesting waiver use approval to operate a class C liquor license, which includes sale of beer, wine and spirits for consumption on the premises at 30959 Five Mile Road in the Livonia Plaza Shopping Center on the south side of Five Mile Road between Henry Ruff and Mirman Road in the northwest quarter of section 23. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval.
I'll support.
Is there any comments on the approving motion from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
Um, the, um, as we discussed in the study meeting, the, um, the ax parlor had pursued an alternate path for getting a, a special kind of liquor license because it's difficult in this kind of entertainment venue. If you can't serve a beer or wine and every other venue like this does, it's very difficult to be competitive. And they withdrew that request and went back through the full process to obtain a class C license. So I'm very comfortable granting the approval for this.
Mr. Chair.
Or offering the approval.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I understand what my colleagues perhaps want on this. Perhaps it's my age or, uh, being involved in things that, um, have, uh, spirits among them. I don't think that's an appropriate way to, um, have at a ax throwing place, even though there are cages of people drinking. Um, I'm sorry, I just, I can't agree with it. I, I wish these guys good luck, but this kind of venue, I don't want to see start happening in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
I, I'm laughing just because, Barr knows, no issue with really with what you said, it's just when I hear, you hear that out of context and it just, it's just, and it makes sense when you just hear that in and of itself. Um, but I, I've actually, just with work parties and stuff, I've been at these types of establishments in other places in metro Detroit. Um, well, I'm not a drinker myself, they do have liquor licenses, it's not been an issue. It's like a lot of other similar types of, these types of entertainment, it's well-controlled. Um, so just having seen that and actually, I don't see an issue with approving this.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Is there anything else from the council on the approving motion? I see none. From the audience, anybody wanting to speak on the approving motion on item number five? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye, the approval is granted. We need a second resolution, uh, waiving the thousand-foot separation requirement from existing class C licensees.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Approving by McCullough, support by Donavich. Any comment from the council on that? I see none. Any comments from the audience on the waiving of the thousand-foot separation requirement from other class C licensees? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on that as well, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye. The waiver is a, oh, well, the, excuse me, the waiver of the thousand-foot separation is also approved. We will move on to item number six. That's a waiver petition from the planning commission for petition 2023060206 submitted by Gerald Todd Clark on behalf of ServiceMaster requesting to develop a planned general development involving the conversion of an existing eight-story office building into climate-controlled self-storage and first-floor retail, including residential and commercial restoration services with the construction, uh, of a drive-up self-storage unit facility and five single-family residential lots on the property of 29200 Vassar Avenue, located on the north side of Vassar between Parkville and Middle Belt Road in the southwest quarter of section number one. By way of context here, the council heard this matter originally on September 18th and at that time the council had six members present and the matter ended in a three-three tie. At the time, we were under the presumption that the three-three tie would, in effect, stand as a denial. Our law department did some research in pursuit of state law. We need a definitive answer, so this is before the council again. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the council. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to put this back into Committee of the Whole at this time.
Okay, we have a motion for Committee of the Whole offered by Mr. Morgan with support from Mr. Donavick. What Committee of the Whole is, is that would provide the council a different context to have a study meeting on this item and this item alone in a closer proximity upstairs in the council chamber where we can investigate the matter and talk to the parties a little bit more freely in regards to understanding what is being proposed in order to make a better decision. Is there anybody on the council who'd like to offer anything else at this time? Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. So I'm not in favor of this plan, however, I do understand some of my colleagues, they have some further questions. So if colleagues have questions and they want to dive deeper into this a little bit more before we make a determination, I'll be okay with that. So I'll be supportive of Mr. Morgan's motion to send it to committee.
Thank you. I know we have the petitioner here. Does the petitioner wish to address the council now, or would you like to wait till the Committee of the Whole meeting? Thank you, Mr. Cowan. I'll note, Mr. Cowan has spoken from the back of the room. That is the attorney for the petitioner. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak on item number six? Seeing none at the, come on up to the podium then. Tell me your name and address, sir.
Down at Hall 29105 Vassar. I live across the street from this vacant building, and, you know, I'd like to see something done. You know, we got someone here that's wanting to drop the money in there and actually turn this into something that give you residential places, which is tax revenue, right? You know, he's giving us a green space up in the front of the place. You know, I've looked at the plans. I kind of appreciate the plans. Our neighbors appreciate the plans, you know? I would like to see this approved. I mean, you know, the last one that came in tried to turn this into a residential place. I guess he ran out of funds. I don't know what happened. So I'm staring at a vacant building, a vacant concrete lot, dilapidated wall going around this building, right? You know, I could be a little bit more in-depth with what's going on besides there's been drug addicts, there's been homeless people living in this building. I've called police numerous times. I'm sure I'm on record calling. And to one time to where I even got accused of being one of whom that was doing it, and I'm the one who had to show my license that I actually live across the street, you know? Trying to keep the area safe.
Let me be clear, by going to Committee of the Whole, yourself and people with your opinion as well as everybody else here who's interested will have an opportunity to speak at that time. It's just a different kind of meeting. This is a big meeting with people who are concerned about all different things here today, right? This meeting would be focused squarely on this and would allow us to have a dialogue with you, the petitioner, anybody else involved as well.
I definitely appreciate that, you know? And I appreciate everybody else for what they're in here fighting for to, and to get things approved, you know? I appreciate you giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that the item is posted if it does pass. Mr. Donavick, I mean, pass for Committee of the Whole. Mr. Donavick, or Mr. Barr, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't do that.
I won't speak at length as I did at the study meeting, but for those that did watch the study, I'm sorry, not the study meeting, the last regular meeting on this topic. I think it's probably fair to say that all seven of us are probably in agreement with some form of an ideal that would involve this building being demolished, maybe combined with some nearby properties and developed together as a really nice residential type of development inconsistent with Vision 21. That's what every one of us would like to see. But the reality is, right now, we have a privately-owned piece of property that is zoned for something different. We have a use coming before us that's allowed within that zoning. It is a blighted building. There's no other way to put it. It's a blighted building. And we have somebody ready to spend $10 million to invest in this building, to use it for what they believe is a viable business. There's a lot about that that's very attractive to me. And I stated very passionately, I tried very hard to get this approved at the last meeting, as was stated, we didn't have, we had a 3-3 tie both ways. I still feel that way. I feel that we have the information we need to make a decision on this. However, just in some conversations today with some of my colleagues and kind of getting, trying to get a feel of where council was at on this, I believe that if it were not for putting this Committee of the Whole right now, and I will say, there's been some really good questions asked by my colleagues today that made me think too about my position on this. So I think there are things to discuss. But for those here that are disappointed that this is a blighted building, that we're not going to approve this tonight, it's my belief that if this were not going to Committee of the Whole tonight, this would be denied. And so with that in mind, I do support this going to committee because I don't like the alternative. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Like I said, anybody interested will have a chance to speak about this at the Committee of the Whole meeting, which I presume we're going to send this to in just a moment. So if there's no other audience comment on item number six, I will ask Ms. Nash to take the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. So this will be scheduled for a Committee of the Whole meeting. I'll ask, Ms. Casperowitz is here as well. We'll make sure that we get notice out to anybody who's interested in regards to this and check the city website as well. Okay? So we'll move on to item number seven. This is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, Petition 2023070211 submitted by the Manik and Smith Group requesting waiver use approval to demolish an existing Burger King and construct a new automated car wash facility at Clean Express Auto Wash at 34835 Plymouth Road located on the south side of Plymouth between Stark and Wayne in the northwest quarter of Section 33. We do have new data on this item from the petitioner and the city treasurer. Counsel, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
Offer an approving.
We have an approving from Mr. Barr. He needs support.
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 We have support from Ms. McIntyre.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
So I understand some of the concerns that have been expressed about this being a car wash. We've had other car washes approved in the community recently. My understanding is that there's some more coming. I'm not in the car wash business, so I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on it. That's actually part of the point, though. I think we need to be very careful about presuming whether a business is going to be successful or not up here when we're not there. When we have somebody, similar to the last item, when we have somebody coming to invest a significant amount of money in a piece of property, they're not doing that if they don't think they have a viable business. I used the analogy in the last meeting of if 25 years ago you had looked into the future and seen how many Starbucks there were out there, you would have said it was crazy. But the bottom line is they came up with a business model that worked and didn't necessarily meet existing demand. It created a whole new demand that wasn't there before. And I think with some of these new brands, these franchise model of the subscription model car washes, I think you have a similar thing going on. So people that say, well, what are we going to do with another car wash? I, we won't get too deep into the business of it here, but I just, I don't think it's for us to make that determination. Again, some similar themes to the last item. We've got a vacant building here. Nobody likes vacant buildings. It's a building that was a drive-through Burger King. I don't think the traffic impact of a car wash is going to be much different than what a drive-through Burger King would have been. And so for all those reasons, I see this as a positive thing. That's why I offered the approving. I'll touch on one other point. We had a comment in the last, Councilman Donavick had raised the question in the last meeting as to whether we should put no-left turns coming out of here. It's rare that I'm a fan of those types of things. I think all it does is take a problem from one place and move it to somewhere else. Most places I can think of in the city where there's a no-left turn, all you're doing is creating a jam in the left-turn lane on the road that they're turning right to because everybody's trying to turn around the way they want to go. And I just go back to the fact that what was here before was a Burger King with a steady stream of cars coming through a drive-through and coming out. I don't see this as much different. It's worked before. I think it could work again. So, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for counsel, I know we got some new data today, and I've confirmed with the treasurer, with Linda Scheel, our treasurer, that the petitioner owes $1,996,31 in personal property tax. So as of just a few moments ago, they still owe their personal property taxes of $1,996.31. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. And sir, you're here for the petitioner, correct?
Yes, I'm with Manik and Smith Group, the engineer and petitioner.
What's your name?
My name's Jake Relet.
Okay. So you've heard my colleague here, Mr. Donavick, question some taxes that are due and owing. Do you have any information about that?
Yes, I have a printout here of a payment made to the BSNA website on the 9/26. So I believe that was Thursday of last week.
Okay. Our city treasurer, Ms. Scheel, is coming up to the podium here. And I'll just ask, Ms. Scheel, you are the keeper of the property tax records. Is this item in arrears?
So they paid their real property taxes on 9/26. The personal property taxes that Mr. Donavick just mentioned are still owing.
Okay, and those are payable to your office as well?
That's correct.
Okay. So...
We're not the actual owner yet, so I'll have to get ahold of the current owner after the purchase agreement goes through.
It's usually by way of process. We don't typically approve, and we try not to vote on things when people owe us tax money, and us being the city of Livonia. So I'll go back to Mr. Barr again.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't plan on talking this much tonight, sorry. I was aware of that and momentarily forgot when I offered the approving. He's absolutely right. You've heard what I think the direction should be on this, but in light of that information, I would withdraw my approving and offer a tabling. Maybe we give them two weeks to get their taxes taken care of.
Support.
Okay, so at this point in time, the motion is to table or essentially adjourn this item for you to take care of these property taxes that are owed and work with the owner of the property to do so.
Yeah, I'll have to get ahold of him and get that figured out.
Okay. Ms. Toy?
Did you know about this, sir? I mean...
I was under the impression that this was all handled. I didn't realize there were two separate tax outstanding issues, so this is least to me.
Yeah, we have that in Livonia. And I want to thank our city treasurer for bringing this forward and a keen eye on that. Thank you, Linda, a lot.
Okay. So you heard the motion. If it does pass, which I presume it will, we'll put this on the next regular meeting agenda, and then we'll have this conversation again then, okay? With that being said, the motion at the time, right now, is to table or essentially adjourn the item until the next regular meeting. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak on that motion to table this item? Okay, with that being said, we'll see this matter again in two weeks. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on tabling item number seven?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, and that'll be on October 16th.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We'll see you then, and any other interested parties come back on October 16th as well. Item number eight is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission. This is the appeal of a denial for 2023070210 submitted by Technical Group Inc. requesting waiver use approval under Section 6.51 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to construct and operate a drive-through coffee shop, Scooter's Coffee, and convert the existing building on the property into an ice cream shop, Lickety Split, at 19100 Farmington Road. That's the southeast corner of Seven Mile Road in Farmington in the northwest section, northwest quarter section of 10. This was denied by the Planning Commission on August 29th and appealed at a public hearing held on September 13th of 2023.
I'll move approving, Mr. Chair.
I'll support.
We have an approving from Toy, support from McCullough. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to this item? I see none. Is there, I'm sorry.
No, so we had a public hearing on this, and while we value our planning commission, we study everything. I think it was a 3-2 denial. This is seven in Farmington, so it's the southeast corner, and the petitioner is bringing forth a Scooter's Coffee. If you haven't seen one, I think they're starting to pop up around Metro Detroit. Very cool operation. And then also, the petitioner is going to bring Lickety Split, which is a family-owned concept that would also be on the site as well. Again, we're talking about a vacant corner that's been sitting there for many, 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 many years, and I think this would be a great investment to the corner. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough just wants to make sure he can get his caffeine fix at that corner as he's drinking his Red Bull. Is there anything else from the council here at this time? I see none. Is there anything from the audience in regards to item number eight? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on eight, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, item eight is approved. At this time, I'm going to hand the gavel here to Vice President Toy. I have a professional conflict in regards to item number nine, so I'll be stepping away from the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. I will read, item nine is from our Planning Commission, Petition 2022-12-01-02 submitted by the Basilica of St. Mary requesting to rezone parts of the properties at 18100 Merriman Road and 30600 Brookview Drive located on the east side of Merriman Road between Mayville Drive and Seven Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 11 from PL, which is Public Lands, to N2 Neighborhood. A public hearing was held on September 13th, 2023.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to offer a Committee of the Whole option.
We have a Committee of the Whole. Do I have support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman...
Madam President?
Yes, Morgan, yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I know there's been a lot of discussion on this topic. I've received so many emails and phone calls and different social media correspondence. I have tried my very best to respond. I know a lot of my colleagues have also dealt with the same thing, and it's been very difficult. So I do first want to say thank you to anybody who's reached out for it and again and so on. I think there's still a lot of discussion here to be had. I know that there's been some, new points have been brought up since the last public hearing, and I think it'd be a good idea for us to kind of discuss a little bit further, go in depth a little bit more, kind of iron out some more details. I'm not sure where the rest of my colleagues are, but in my opinion, we'll have another meeting. I know sometimes these meetings can be long, but I do think they're important, especially with something as noteworthy as this. I think it's important to make sure we cross all of our Ts, dot off our Is, and talk about a little further. And then, at that point, we make the rezoning decision, then we go into the site plan decision. I know some of these things can be confusing, how the process goes, but it is a long process, and hopefully we make the right decision. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. A couple of things that I would ask even the petitioner to bring up at some point is I know at the last meeting I talked about stormwater management, and I understand that the plan would encapsulate that. However, just the proximity to the protected hazardous wetland, I know we discussed it a little bit. I actually went out to the site, and I'm still getting conflicts of how far that is from the parking lot. So I'd just like to have that information so we could discuss that Committee of a Whole. The other thing that I would like to do, and I'm asking hopefully legal to take a further dive into this, is some of us received mail. I've got some information from the Planning Commission from 1989 that stated the agreement to the Cultural Center, and I will forward this on, but I'd like to take a deeper dive into that as well, and it was more of usage and what the Cultural Center was meant out to be. I just would like to have everything in front of us before we make a decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman?
I too received information on the cultural, the origin of the Cultural Center. Unfortunately, what I received in the mail was a long document that had no signature on it. I take resident phone calls, letters, texts, and I know I'm behind on responding to a number of those because we've had a lot, there's been a tsunami on a lot of issues. But if you're going to send me something and you want me to read it and you want me to weigh it, please put a name on it, because without a name, it doesn't have any context. And I take everything very seriously that I receive, with the exception of things that are unsigned, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the council before we go to the audience? I'd also like to note on that envelope, there was no return address, if I stand corrected.
No, there was, or no signature.
So the information was not on there, I agree. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? If you are, you will need to line up at either podium, and I will ask the petitioner's representative, he would like to go first since you brought the petition to us. And good evening, your name and address for the record, please.
Hey there, good evening, everybody. Brandon Grisco, Law Firm of Fosona Grisco, 41700 Six Mile Road. That's in Northville Township. I'm an attorney representing the Basilica of St. Mary's here tonight. I suppose there's a whole lot I'd like to say, but to the extent this is going to end up in the committee, I would just as soon reserve many of those comments for a committee-type meeting where we can have a more intimate discussion of those details. I would look forward to addressing some of Councilman McCullough's concerns and would, you know, if somebody could maybe send me the documents that were concerning, that were sent, I'd be happy to be prepared to address those there as well. And Basilica looks forward to working with the council to bring forward a good development here on this vacant portion of their property.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioner? Councilwoman McIntyre.
I'm just going to ask that whoever sent this information, which they felt was very, very important, send a signed copy to the council office, and then I'd be very comfortable sharing that with the council and the petitioner. But again, to me, an unsigned document does not hold any sway. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Brian Smith, 30126 Brookview Drive. I do support the committee of the whole, but I'd like to leave you with some comments tonight. As we all know by now, it is a fact that the proposed building would have a significant negative impact on the property values of the residents of Brookwood Estates and adjacent neighborhoods, as outlined at prior ZBA meetings. It is a fact that none of the residents of the Brookwood Estates subdivision that live adjacent to Bryant Field or the Tarabousee Wetland want these type of buildings in the proposed space. There are a number of homeowners here tonight wearing shirts that read "Save Bryant Field." They could also read "Save Our Green Spaces," or "Save Our Property Values," or "Save Our Livonia Way of Life." In destroying a precious green space forever, we must ask ourselves, why? Why can't this structure be located somewhere else? Why must we entertain a harmful rezoning to appease outside interests? Why do the wants and needs of Livonia residents come less? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go right ahead, sir, to my right.
Thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry, and I should have announced this. You do have two minutes for your comments.
I just had to add my comments.
If I may just finish for one second. You have two minutes, and Councilwoman McIntyre will be the official timekeeper, okay? I want to make that clear to everyone, because we've gotten some emails that said they were treated unfairly last time. And so I want to clear that up right now. You have two minutes. Thanks.
My name is Robert Nader, and I am a St. Mary's parishioner and a concerned citizen. In 1964, my wife and I bought a house in Livonia. We lived here for nine years. At that time, we had a proactive mayor, Edward McNamara, along with the proactive city council. And I personally believe that that team rewrote the words to a proverb, "Leave no land, leave no stone unturned," I'm sorry. And they rewrote the words and put in there, "Leave no land sitting idle in Livonia." Now, Livonia is considered one of the highlight cities in the state of Michigan in the living. It is centrally located metropolitan, which really makes it ideal. The 2023 council here today has an opportunity to enhance Livonia and keep the city moving in the positive direction that it's been going. And allow, and vote yes on the rezoning proposals, excuse me, and allow St. Mary's to build an eye-catching cultural center that complies with all the requirements, all the parking spots, and all the infrastructure, okay? Or do we, and everybody here, do want to continue driving up and down Merriman Road, looking east and say, "Why is that land idle?" Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mike Burgess, 30825 Mayville. I look out on the field. Earlier this evening, I got to talk to four members of the church.
Sir, Director Cobbins, this way, please.
And it was very respectful. But my concerns are, recently Livonia residents got an increase on the water bill. And if they're building more buildings on this site, how much is that going to affect our water bills? How much is that going to affect a struggling electrical infrastructure? Because our power outages go out quite often anymore. And that's basically what I wanted to say. And it's something the committee hopefully will take into account.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Freddie Saklo. I'm here on behalf of St. Mary's, 18100 Merriman Road, Livonia, Michigan. I think that it goes unsaid sometimes, how much the church really does for the community. And it's sad that you doubt that it will do that this time, or that the community doubts it. They, the church has gone from a small church to one of the most beautiful churches in the country. The church has built a cultural center that, to my understanding, more than every other week, hosts an event for the school, the school board, on average throughout the year, at discounted rates, sometimes at no charge at all. The church, probably everybody in this room, has attended a function there. The subdivision behind the church has gathered a string of people that see things differently than the rest of the community. People, my first cousin, living in that subdivision, gets someone to come to her door daily. Sometimes we focus on what the minority, the small minority in this room is saying, and not what on the majority has been doing for years. To put Father George or St. Mary's in a hole, basically telling them, "We question what you'll give back to this community." It's sad, especially from a person that you all know has come here 14 years in a row and done something beautiful for this community on behalf of the church. I ask you to stop beating the community up. And I ask the community who lives here. The last name Saklo alone, I can name five addresses in this city. We've been here our whole lives. My dad started his first office on the corner of Farmington next to Bates. You all have to speak up.
Sir, this way.
No, to our community, not to you guys. The community has to speak up. We are residents of Livonia, not around the block, but from Eight Mile all the way to Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you.
Living in Westland. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And always a pleasure to be before you.
And if you'd like to speak, please line up. Yes, sir. Your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you. Mark Nassif, 42 Watson Street, Detroit. My understanding from the last meeting was that if the zoning change is approved, it only becomes effective if, I believe, site plan is approved later down the road. If not, it reverts. My concern is that, and I'm a parishioner at St. Mary's. My concern is that if we do not have the ability to continue through the process, everyone has asked very important questions, stormwater, other things that need to be studied in detail. My concern is if we are not allowed to continue through the process, continue the environmental studies, continue our submissions to the city and other various bodies, we won't be able to provide enough accurate details to dispute some of the misinformation that's currently being circulated. So the request is to approve the zoning change, which is contingent on site plan approval and further steps down the road. Allow us to continue on the development process. Allow us to get factual, accurate answers, so that when you all get those hard decisions and those hard questions put in front of you in the next few months and years, you have scientific, studied, factual answers that can be vetted against city ordinances, building department, building engineers, and your decisions can be made based on fact and not rumor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, hi.
Hello. I'm Colleen Bedrow, 17415 Sunset Street. In regard to the rezoning, which is what we're here to talk about, I understand there's a possibility to go to the committee of the whole. My concern is environmental and nature, and specifically the wetland and floodplain surveys that need to be done. It's my opinion that rezoning, prior to having this data, is putting the cart before the horse. I've sent each of you emails with links to Eagle and Friends of the Rouge surveys that are, that need to be done. From my understanding, the Eagle survey is a six-to-nine-month process. So to, again, approve rezoning and start moving in that direction before we have the data to even outline where the wetland stands is premature. I'd also like to respond to comments around this, the land being idle or vacant. I can tell you, I spend time there daily. It is not. It is used by the community for recreation, for solace, for many other purposes. Just because there's not a building there doesn't mean that it's idle or unused. I also want to comment that, although I do believe that there are probably some neighbors that have sour taste in their mouth about what their beliefs are about the church community, most of the people that I've spoken to have not had negative things to say. It's more about preserving the land and doing this in a way that's above ground, in a way that's transparent, and keeping all of Livonia's residents in mind and at heart.
Can I ask you, have you ever tried to contact Eagles so we have something to go on, perhaps?
All I'm.
If indeed, everybody keeps pointing the water, et cetera.
Yeah.
I have nothing from the state of Michigan saying anything about the water, any kind of floodplain, anything like that.
The.
And I don't see it in our packet, so help me out.
I can forward you the data that shows the last wetland survey was done in 2012, which seems quite old. And I can send you the link that I just, this was just my own research. I do feel like I had a point of contact, but I have to go back, because that was back in January.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council. Anyone else before we close this up? Okay, we've had an approving, a denying coming to us, and a committee of the whole. Mr. Donavick, or Councilman Donavick, has offered a committee of the whole. Yes, Mr. Barr.
Just to clarify, there's only a resolution for committee of the whole. We don't have an approval or a denial.
Right, right.
I think the gentleman who spoke over here a little bit ago made some excellent points. We have to remember that this is a rezoning petition. And at the risk of overrepeating, but I think with people that aren't familiar with the process, it doesn't hurt. What we typically, to get a property rezoned, you have to do a first read, which is basically saying, "Hey, community, we've taken the first step towards this. Come out and talk to us about it." And then there's a second read before a vote happens. But what we traditionally do, what we've done every single time since I've been on council, is hold that second read until there's a site plan that we approve, and then we handle them both at once. So even if this first read of this rezon, and even if this rezoning, and actually, there's a step even before the first read that we'd be doing tonight if this was. So this is a long process, very transparent, maximizes opportunity for community input, which has already happened through Planning Commission multiple meetings and has happened here now. So when I look at the rezoning, and this is one thing that I think can clear up some of the, perhaps misunderstanding based on the emails that we've received. The only thing this is speaking to is a western portion of the property that pertains to the school that the church has said that they would like to do. The concerns about what's been talked about, a senior living complex on the eastern part of the property, is regardless of what your opinions are about that, that has nothing to do with what we're doing, you know, with here tonight. This is only a piece of property at the back of the church property right now for the school. And we're looking at a piece of property that historically was a school. And from my conversations with Livonia Public Schools' school board members over the years is the reason they've not sold the rest of this property is because they're holding it to build a school there someday. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, their intent was that potentially, if they ever needed to do a new high school, that that would go there. Looking at the size of the property, I had my questions as to whether that would be feasible, but I'm not on the school board. The point is, this property was not uninhab, it was not just green space before. It's not intended to be green space in the future, regardless of what we do here. And so you have a piece of property that was always zoned for a school, is intended to be zoned for a school in the future, and we have someone coming and saying, "Can we take a piece of the property? Can we zone it so we can use it for a school?" That, just purely on the zoning issue, purely on the zoning issue, there's lots of questions related to the site plan. Purely on the zoning issue, I don't see a reason not to proceed with that. Now, I think I'm in, if I'm reading the room here, I think I'm probably in the minority on this. I'm just saying, I don't need new information for this to send this committee of the whole. The new information I need, as was talked about over here, is the stuff related to the site plan, which we would get if we can move forward with this process. But if you're asking me, is it appropriate to zone this for a school? Yeah. So I won't be supporting committee. I mean, it sounds like it's going to go there, and we'll get a chance to talk about this, and that's fine. I just wanted to explain, my reason for not supporting committee is just that. This is a zoning. And the question is, is that a proper zoning for the land? And I think the answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Barr, or Councilman Barr. All ready. We'll go back to the audience. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Margaret Rudis, 31038 Mayville. And we back up right to the field there. I guess we're about preserving the land as open space. And we've always lived with knowing that there could be something built there, like houses or something. And I'm mostly opposed to the senior home. And I know, I hear what you're saying about that this is more that, but there's also the, give an inch, they take a mile. And as far as laws in our lands have always been the majority rule. We vote on things, we elect you guys, and you guys are supposed to do what you think the majority of people want. And the majority of people do want that space to be preserved. If you put it to a vote, Livonia population, Livonians would want that preserved. And I think that's a fact. As far as, it's a good idea to have open land. We've already lost the other school areas. The Old Webster and Linden is gone. The other part of Linden, where there was the Adams School, those that now have houses, we're losing more and more of it. The question, do we want to lose more open space? Part of what makes Livonia special is we do still have a lot of open. And I don't, I don't like the word idle. It's open. It's used, it's enjoyed for the community and that kind of thing. So, I mean, I get it that this is just about the school part, and there was a school there. And personally, I'm not that opposed to that piece of it. But if you give an inch, you take a mile. And then the second part of the property that they want to do, the senior home on, that we are vehemently opposed to. So, and then the future of that property. The churches, sadly, I'm a Catholic, all the Catholic churches that have closed. And what's going to happen 20, 30, 40 years ago to that church and community? And if that church is sustainable, I hope it is, but churches aren't always sustainable. So then what would happen to it in the future? We have to think not just short-term, even 20, 30 years of the residents that want to move there now, that will be dead 20, 30, 40 years from now, and what will happen to that land then, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Samantha Raj. I live at 30208 Brookview Drive, so directly down the street from the field that we're all here to talk about today. I live with my three-year-old daughter and my husband. They are not here because, like many families who are probably not here today, they're doing bedtime. There's tons of families, tons of young children, tons of young families that live in our neighborhood. And we had every intention of moving to Livonia because of the beautiful neighborhood that we're in. It's very close to woodlands, wetlands, and all of this beautiful land that also is right in the middle of a subdivision and a very desirable neighborhood and beautiful area. So I would like to think that I'm, like many parents here or who are not here, trying to represent many of us who could not be here tonight because of the exact same reasons why my family is not here. You know, a lot of the reason that I moved here is because I love the neighborhood. I love having city in the front, country in the back. I say it every day that I talk to family and friends. And the field is something that we all really cherish as part of our neighborhood. And it's not about the church being there. I've been to St. Mary's Church for events before. It's a beautiful facility. I believe in, you know, their right to do everything that they want out of their multicultural center, their monastery school that they currently run, and all of the different activities and events that they host for the community. But the field is not about the church in my eyes. It is about our community and the residents and the taxpayers that are here in Livonia. And even though the land itself, it's not up for debate at this moment of what actually goes there, it is about the zone and land change, environment change. There's a lot of things that still need to be done in order for anybody to develop there, whether it's the church, whether it's an independent developer, whatever that may be. So I would like the council to please consider that.
Thank you very much. Yes, good evening.
Hi, Deb Christensen. Two points. I'm responding to some things that have already been mentioned here by some folks in the audience. First thing is, I don't live anywhere near this area. So I am one of the residents and citizens here in Livonia that care about this place, even though I live on the opposite side of the city. So when somebody's making this broad generalization that there are more people, the majority of people don't care about this, that's not true. Because I'm standing here in front of you, telling you I live on the south side, and I care about what's happening in this green space, okay? So, second point. And I know somebody also mentioned, like, the property being idle. That was a trigger word for me, because in my mind, when I think about Livonia and I think about the green land we have here, it's wonderful. Whether or not it was supposed to be a school or zoned for a school, it doesn't mean that there needs to be something put there just because it's empty. The places that, in my mind, that are idle are the Old House of Denmark, which is in my area, or Sears, or the Kmart. That's the idle. That's where the idle, that's where the idle property is happening. So please address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Laura Burke, 30573 Brookview. I was sitting back there, changing my notes constantly as people were speaking, so I'll try to read this quickly. Jackson, Jackson Early Childhood Center located in Livonia is a preschool childcare facility, pre-K facility, that's located on Hubbard, if you're not aware. There are probably many more things that they offer at that school, but I'm not there every day. I mean, my children are grown. But they will be moving soon to a new location across Laurel Park on New Bird Road. This new facility was made possible by the Livonia voters who approved a 2021 bond. I am not sure about the bond. I think it was 195, 195 million, possibly. The 72,000-square-foot, $28 million project will become the new Livonia Public School and Early Childhood Center.
Excuse me, excuse me. What are you addressing, the Jackson facility?
No, I'm coming to it.
Oh.
The new facility will welcome your, will welcome over 700 students to pass through these doors weekly. St. Mary's wishes to build a school for pre-K, childcare, as I understand it. Doesn't that look very similar to the LPS system, Center that we're paying for to be built? I understand there are differences. I understand that they may wish a child perhaps go to school of their religious beliefs. I personally had some of my own children go to private schools. That was of my religious beliefs, so that is very dear to me. What I want to express is, to the least to the city council, that St. Mary's wishes to build the proposed school, or any proposed building, is going to benefit St. Mary's parishioners and future parishioners. Again, oh, shoot, I lost it. Anyways, now I lost it. But anyways, so I'm just, I'm just saying that, that we approve this bond that we're paying for, and it looks like.
Thank you.
Duplicating both them and them.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
I was just going to say, I know there's a motion on the floor. I know there's been a lot of great discussion, but there is going to be a meeting. It sounds like there's going to be another meeting coming up. So if you can kind of bring some of your comments to that meeting. We've talked about this a lot, so just hoping that we can have a really robust meeting and go more in depth at that committee meeting, if that committee meeting is voted on. So I just wanted to kind of make that point, Councilwoman Toy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I would, I would agree. Sir, did you want to make a quick comment then? Yes, please do.
Excuse me?
No, no, it's fine. Go right ahead.
Yeah, my name is Donar.
Yeah, my name is Don Archusian, and I live at 31397 Mayville in Livonia, and I'll make a statement, a comment here, as other person made. It's like taking a horse before the carriage, you know, giving him the right to get the possible, be able to rezone the property.
Okay.
He should have their plan, because one thing I noticed about their plans, just to throw in, is the parking spaces weren't even possible for them to have for that area that they wanted to build their building on, the church did. And also, the church is very beautiful. It's a beautiful church, and that's what it is, is a church. It's not in the business of having it be an apartment building, or whatever they want to call that building. And also, it was stated that not many people in the community around there, from, it was stated by somebody that not many of the people in the community around there are objected to that building that's going to be built on that property. Well, that's wrong. I, I think maybe that person don't live in that area, that's why he said it. And as far as the person that said about their property, he's kind of looked down on their property as, not valuable, as a piece of property that it is, as a field, you know, and a place for kids to play in and lot, and, and that person, I guess, obviously would think that a park would be a place to build a building like that. You know, they don't appreciate a park, they don't appreciate that field. So that's it.
Appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. Councilman McCullough.
Just a quick thing. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate everybody that came out. Obviously, this is the forum to do so. The one things I just wanted to touch base on, and I want to go back to Councilman Donavick, because he does bring up a great point, we will be studying this further in committee of a whole. But it's been talked about open space. We have setbacks, and so while schools and different things are placed on properties, they usually have certain setbacks to the things. You're not going to put a house or a Taco Bell 10 feet away from a bedroom window. The issue that I see with this is you have the TWC Creek that is right next to it, and according to the limits of construction, you're within 20 to 30 feet of a protected hazardous FEMA floodplain. We're going to add a, a big facility, and like I said, some of these comments have been great, one of the petitioners brought up, it hasn't been done since 2012. Before we do something this big on this site, I think it would behoove us to, to make sure that we're not going to be polluting potentially the Rouge. This is where that, that creek funnels into. And so, you know, this is something that we're not going to know an environmental impact until it's potentially too late. So for us to do our due diligence and ensure that these protections are in place for the long term is very important, and I don't think it should be something that's overshadowed. So again, thank you all for coming out. We'll have a lot more dialogue on this, but I just wanted to get that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. My colleagues' comments are correct. Committee of the whole, we go deep dive into a lot of this if that passes, so, you know, save your comments, think about it if, if indeed it does, and write down some of your comments. And we thank you all for coming out here tonight. You took time out of your schedules, whether you're for or against, or whatever, to come out, and we appreciate that. So we're going to go to you, and go right ahead.
Thank you, President Protem, Toy.
Thank you.
And my name's Steve Johnson at 18240 Sunset, and I had a conversation with Councilmember McCullough while he was on the campaign trail. I, I had to run alongside of his truck while he was, he was driving to talk to him, he was going so fast, but, and, and we did discuss, yes, the Red Bull was there. We did discuss the school, and he asked me if I was against the school, and I said, generally, I'm not against the school, but it appears that this building is going to be much more than a school, a 35,000-square-foot building for children one through five, with a gymnasium, with a stage. So there are many questions regarding this matter that begs a pause by the council. Move this into a committee where this issue can be more thoroughly investigated. Councilmember Barr keeps mentioning, or kept mentioning, only a school, but the petitioner has said it will also be a family center, it will be a family and youth center, it will be a family unit center, and now I hear it will be a family, a, a, a community center. So again, there's many questions surrounding this issue. Let's get it into a committee and get the questions answered. I thank you for your time and efforts on this, this matter, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we're going to go to the committee of the whole vote. Any other comments from our colleagues here? If not, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No, the motion passes. Okay, I'm going to return the gavel to our president, Jim Jolly.
I'm going to give just a moment here for people to clear out. If you don't mind, try to keep it down as you're leaving. We'd like to, we have another meeting after this. So, you know, we'll go right into new business. Item number 10 is a block party request from Barb Ferrera to be held Saturday, October 7th, 2023, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Perth between Arden and Berwick Streets. We do have new data on here from the petitioner. Can I have a motion from the council?
Oh, support.
Motion by Toy, support from McCullough. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi.
Welcome to the meeting. Can you tell us something about your block party, please?
Yes, it's going to be fun.
We like fun.
It's going to be cold and fun. It's changed to Sunday instead of Saturday. We're going to have a bounce house, we have a DJ, we're having burgers, hot dogs, since it's so cold, we're going to have cider and donuts now. We have a cornhole tournament.
Can, can I ask everyone to be quiet, please?
Please.
Just if you want to leave and have conversations, please do so outside the auditorium, preferably outside the building, because we can still hear you there. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, that's okay.
Go ahead.
We're having a chili cook-off, and we're having a cookie cook-off, like a little contest. I know, it's said fun.
Very good. So you're, you are amending your request to be on Sunday, October 8th, is that correct?
Please, yes, that's correct.
And then I'll, I'll note, because that is days away for the administration, we're going to request a no veto letter as well, just to make sure you're all squared away.
Okay.
All right, so I take it there's no objections from my colleagues to move that motion of approval to Sunday, October 8th?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick.
Can we add in the motion that the petitioner brings us those cookies to the next meeting?
I know, I know. We have someone on our block that does.
Nothing would make me happier than you feeding him 11-day-old cookies. So, that sounds good. Thank you, and best wishes. Hold on, we're going to vote on this just to make it all official. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on item number 10? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, you are approved, and we will request that non-veto letter from the mayor. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is a request to certify the 2023 Transportation Asset Management Plan. This is Pursuits Public Act 325 from the Engineering Division, as required by the Michigan Transportation Asset Management Council, citing Council Resolution 281-20. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll put a motion for approval.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by Toy. Mr. Zlinsik, do you want to give us any info on this?
Just give you a brief description. Basically, any agency over 100 miles has to reapply this, this plan. Obviously, we want to maintain our assets, make sure we're in good shape. We maintain 312.99 miles on our city local streets, and just over 60.52 miles on our major, of which we have 1.47 miles of unpaved streets, but basically comprised of our paved assets, our bridges, traffic signals, and culverts. And recently, we did some culvert investigation with the help of OHM. We have Jessica Katers here, principal that helped assist in this report, and we want to make sure we meet the deadline to provide our updated assets. We are in good shape on the road assets. We're on our major and minor roads, 60 to 68% on fair, the poor is 5 to 10%, and then good, 30 to 25%. So a national, or a state road system is just way above that, the poor is 32%, the fair is 40, 42, and the good is 26%. So again, we're very blessed to have a road millage to help do our road improvements over $10 million a year, and I also want to say thanks to Wayne County for doing the joy and Merriman Road traffic signal. If you've been down there recently, it's a left-turn phase signal that's been upgraded. So we want a $270,000 investment for those kids that go to Franklin High School, it's been several years in the making to make that area safe, and in cooperation with Westland. So again, just trying to improve our assets to costly endeavor, and appreciate council's approval to do a resolution so we can send it off to the TMC and continue, next year, do our pizza ratings throughout the city in-house to, to manage our 373 miles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zlinsik. Is there any comment from the council on this item? I see none. Any comment from the audience on item 11? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on 11, please.[1729.83]